The beautiful coast to live on and the beautiful weather we've enjoyed, God. We just come grateful for all the blessings that we have in our lives. We ask today, Lord, as the board convenes, Lord, that everything done here would be done with a spirit of humility, looking for the best interests of Harrison County. God, we pray that you bless these leaders with the wisdom they need to make the best possible choices. Lord, we thank you for all that you give us. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent Quaidus, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the river of honor for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda today, we, the board will need to tread on the minute, public notice of this interim meeting. Chair, request a motion to do such.
Motion.
Second. Any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. I would like that the board would concur. Let's move item 29 to the top of the agenda. Item 29, just a minute to pull this up. Hey, I don't see if you can go on. There we go. So you gotta have a lady to show you how to operate this thing.
I thought you were gonna say a young person. I would've liked that.
Oh, well, that too, that too. A resolution commending Sweptman Security upon 50 years of service.
Budget.
Second.
All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, most care, I think Wendy's here. Wendy, would you like to?
Thank you.
Say a couple of words and then introduce your parents.
Yeah, we, well, first, we just want to come this morning and thank the board's advisors for recognizing Sweptman Security and 50 years of business. With me today is our owner and president of Sweptman Security Service, my mother Cindy Payne Childers, and my father Wendy Swept. And so, we just wanted to come here together this morning. Harrison County has been amazing partners. And our home, this is where it all started, you know, well over 50 years ago. And that's a long time to be in business. And, you know, we're just proud of the legacy that's there, of the work that's been done. You know, we know that there's no secret to success in this life. It's hard work. And that's what it takes. Be nice and work hard. That's what we say. And so, it's just a really great time for us to celebrate all the men and women that have worked so hard over the years as part of this Sweptman team, and to say thank you to all our clients, all those that have believed in us, given us an opportunity, a chance to come out and serve. And that's what we are, Wendy, public service business. And so, today's a great day, and, you know, I believe you've all received an invitation where we'll have a celebration this Friday at the Grude Center, the old Biloxi Community Center, there just to celebrate again the men and women that work so hard, that are on the front lines doing the job, our clients, and, you know, just the hard work.
Thank each of you for recognizing our company today. It has been a long time. I can't believe, over 50 years I've been doing this. So, thank y'all. Marlon, you've been there.
I've been there. Been on it for 50 years.
I was almost in there for a long time.
That's right.
But we appreciate everything and our partnership with the county, working with each one of the municipalities. It has been a wonderful ride, and I'm so glad that Wendy is on that ride now and I can go to the house. Congratulations.
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 I think they just about said everything. I got two words for everyone. Thank you, thank you. Y'all know I spend a lot of time writing this court out. I'm tired, retired from the county. And again, thank you very much, and I wish everybody a happy day.
We, if it's okay, can we take a picture with the board? Would you mind? I'm right here. And, I know, today's your, look, you're dressed up. It's picture day. We hit it on the right, the right one. We'll be real quick. Maybe somebody take my phone and do that. Frankie's good at that.
I want to make sure. She's shocked.
Which is good, exciting.
Mama, let him come up this way.
And I appreciate you. She has my name. Good morning.
Don't come in the middle. Don't come in the middle.
I'm tall.
Yeah, I'm tall. We get on the end.
By Miss Rebecca. Can we get everybody?
Hold on just a second.
Thanks, Frank.
Good job, Frank.
Thank you so much.
How's it going?
Good.
Wish everybody a happy day.
I might've done this too, so.
Thank you so much for.
It didn't seem too.
Hi, just sounded like to recognize Mr. Noble Sims from Gulfport Island. Mr. Sims, address the board in reference to the project. I think what we're asking, the stem board is interested in where we are in reference to the project, and can you, can you give us an update on?
I'd say there's more going on in that area and on the property than we've ever had going before. We've got good momentum, seeing all the car dealerships and other things on that intersection, driving more traffic and development up in the area. There's a new car wash going on on the old Captain Alice property and the old DDR property that I think is now by Scott Delano is now turning dirt for some new projects. All that to say, more's moving up in that direction. We've got more going on our property than we've had before. A lot of that's been residential to senior assisted living facilities. DR, or DH Horton, rather, is new in a townhouse development on the property, an apartment development running on the property. So we've got more rooftops coming in, which of course brings more people and more traffic.
I think, I'm sorry. Think where we are in reference to the covenants, Mr. Sims, where are we on that?
Our attorney did his revisions, has him back to Ann Bailey, Ann Bailey at MDA, and we're waiting for her comments back. That was what I had as of Friday.
I'd let our attorney address that, but I think we're at a point where that's kind of a critical issue.
Understand.
Right now, because at some point, the board will have to take some action to, to get this taken care of.
The covenants, he would be the covenants last week, got him back to Ann, waiting for Ann's response on a couple of small things, and I think we're in pretty good shape there. I mean, as soon as we get back from Ann, we can move forward with it.
Trish, you have anything like to?
I would, I would like to let you know, full disclosure, at the last board meeting, the board did vote to authorize the board attorney to proceed with default proceedings. It basically is contingent upon how you proceed with the covenants. MDA has indicated to the county that if we take the covenants, there will be really no problems. Vanessa, and if we don't, then there are problems. And the county's on the line for $5 million, which was the original grant. Granted, it was in 2011. By the terms of the grant, it should've been complied with by 2015, and we are not. So, with that being said, they, they are more than accommodating by the covenants, and so, we reviewed them, made some minor changes, and so, I'm glad to hear that you already reviewed them, and so hopefully we get that worked out.
Ann's got, Ann has, as far as I'm as of Friday, our attorney, John Gary, not her back from Ann.
Okay. Well, if y'all are not, if y'all are amenable to sign enough on the contracts, then.
I think that's the critical issue.
Sounds like it, I understand.
I think, we will move, I think the board will move to call the default.
Do we have a timeframe, where things have to be done before we move on the default?
I think, I think if we will have the covenant issue probably resolved within one way or another, I would say within 30 days, 60 days to be safe. I know that HUD, this is the last CVBG grant that is open in the state of Mississippi, and so HUD is coming in, I believe, latter part of the summer to do some work, so it's gonna go one way or the other, but I think we'll know something in 60 days if we need to proceed.
I imagine the covenant issue should be worked out.
I do too.
Next week or two. I can't imagine taking it.
If we get that worked out, I think we'll, we'll all be all right. Thank you.
All right, thank you. If you need anything, just let me know.
Thank you, sir.
Good seeing you all.
All right, at this time, we will take up the issue of roof repairs to cover walkway, add flooring replacement needed at the Biloxi Youth Detention Center. Willie, would you mind giving us an update where we are and need repairs?
We've got a close on the roof repair. It's gonna be over the budget limit, so it's gonna have to go out in the bid. It's $94,150.
And that's to replace the roof?
Yep, all new roof.
Good.
Get rid of all the rock and tar, go back with a flat roof system.
Going back with a flat roof?
Flat roof system, no rocks, but.
It's amazing how optimistic we can be that you can put one on a flat roof and not expect it to leak.
Exactly. And for the flooring, we've got a quote on the flooring for $32,189. We'll have to get another quote on that, but we'll be able, we'll be able to proceed with that. We did put money in capital for this project, so I think that'll.
You have a timeframe, you think, how long the process takes?
Yeah, they're gonna order material, and it'll take a minute. I do have to get a second quote on the floor. That shouldn't be a problem. The covered walkway, we gotta work with the city of Biloxi on that, because that's a city street.
Right.
And they had to put gates in the walkway before, so city vehicles could go through there, but they had to get to it and work on the plumbing, the sewer and everything. But we're waiting on the engineer for the city of Biloxi to get back with us on what we gotta do to it.
Does, does that road go to anywhere else that's between there?
No, it's just between there.
Probably get the city to vacate that road, if it's, if that's all.
I'm not sure what they did before.
What's the issue with that? The city did not want to vacate, or we couldn't vacate the road?
There was some kind of access.
It was, they wanted a emergency access.
Utility access or mercy access or something. There was some kind of access.
There's some kind of, there's a reason why we.
Something to do with access.
We had to put 12-foot gates in the, in the walkway, so they could pass. And with that being said, the roof has to go up, for like, big trucks to go under, a couple roofs not gonna do any good. I mean, if we gotta go up 13, 5, not gonna stop a train.
Right.
And if anybody will let us do it.
Okay, any questions from the board? Think we wanna get this done, anything?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Willie. Let's get it done.
We do have a funding source.
I'm sorry?
We do have a funding source.
Good, good deal. Thank you. Like, at this time, recognize Tim Smith, county road manager, discuss paving.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I submitted to y'all last week, a big number on paving. And what it is, is just to show you how much paving and the cost of it is through the districts. And this is just one district of it. Now, with District 2, the pavement's been so long, it's been 20, 25 years without any of these roads being paved that's on here, that the asphalt's dead, they're patched out, and asphalt's brittle. So they go and put a patch down, it blows out above or behind that patch, so we steady, can't keep up with them. So, in the, in the small paper, you'll see six roads, these are six of the worst roads in District 2, for the 2.283 million. Now, I know y'all got a limit, I know you got a.
Right there.
And this is really to show y'all, the money you get in your drops is not a drop in the hat when it comes to paving. I don't know how you change that or whatever, but $200,000 now, you get a mile of road, your money's not going anywhere. And we've got to do something to keep up with the paving. We've got so much influx of growth in these areas, these roads blowing apart because they're so, so old. So, we try to maximize what money we get from you to pave the worst areas, but we can't keep up with them.
One of the things you need to recognize too, and I think Tim will verify, only paving the roads to, because they get kinda deteriorated, but it's paving the roads to keep them from getting deteriorated. And that's the problem when you let it go.
We're at the point with some of these roads, we might be better off turning them back to gravel roads, to be less maintenance on them. That's just, that's being honest.
To give you a little perspective, when I came on the board of supervisors, it cost $45,000 to pave a mile of road.
Yeah, yeah.
Wow.
When I come in, it was like 70.
Yeah.
So, that's how much of an influx. And what our new term did, I hadn't accepted yet, we just got back, just pick up in places going $90 a ton, and it's 85 now.
Tim, on those bids, how many, how many bidders did we have? Just the ones?
Yes, sir.
Is there any way we can get some competition on ones?
Well, yes, but it's way higher, way higher. Here we stopped still, just like, I wish Doug was here with state aid, you know, they're paying $180 a ton in place, on the average, and they're bidding everything at $200 a ton. We're at $125, $124.95, and the new bid's gonna go up $125.70.
That's with the fuel adjustments, right?
That's all over state contract, right?
Yes. Here's, here's a kicker, here's a kicker of keeping that fuel adjustment.
That's what I was asking, so that is a bid, that's not.
That is a bid, that's not a state.
No, it's our bid, term bid.
That's our term bid.
Then the state sets their fuel adjustment as the fuel goes, you know, price of petroleum goes up and down. Now, if this Middle East war kicks off, you're gonna see something.
We've adopted the state's schedule on that fuel adjustment.
Because of fuel and the petroleum cost, asphalt and fuel.
What you get is a double whammy.
Yeah.
The price of asphalt goes up because it's tied in with petroleum, and then delivering it and putting it down on the road is tied in to petroleum.
Just like Mr. Quaidus and Mr. Barrett, y'all got a district line split on a road, that's over a million and a half to pay.
1.5 for just a 1. something mile of road?
No, it's, well, it's eight mile.
Oh, eight miles, yeah, I'm sorry.
But you just look at that, that's just one road, you know, that y'all split. It's, it's the cost everywhere, we've got to do something.
Just like anything else, if you let something go, then when you got to do something, it's costing you.
You gotta redo the whole, you know, it's rebuilding it.
Should've been paving a little at a time every year.
I just wanted to present that, show y'all, this is what it is, we've got to do something, that the drops you getting in money is nothing.
Tim, so is this, is this, I know that this isn't every road that needs to be done in District 2.
No, that's, that's the worst.
This is just the worst. Can we get one of these, or every district?
Yes, yes.
Get, get this done, and then we can sit down and put a plan together, and sort of, I mean, we do have some money, and we can sort of put a plan together, and then I think what we need to do is go to Jackson, and I know the session's ending for this year, but for next year, go to Jackson and push our legislators to give us a drop of money to take care of some of the roads.
I'll tell you a lot.
They'll give it to us if we ask. We just gotta go and ask.
What used to be our rural roads, there's so much influx of growth now, them are not so rural anymore, that there's a whole influx of traffic, and like I said, it's blowing these roads apart.
And there's some of these roads we need to push in, as well, that are state aid roads.
To Wyden?
Yeah, to come in, like Highway 53, for example, you know, y'all.
That's, that's a new road.
I know that's with all the development that's going on around there, that's a state aid road, that should be.
We got several.
We shouldn't have to worry about development slowing us, or us slowing development down because the state's not doing their job on some of those roads as well. And every one of our districts have those.
Tim, is there a way to do this by percentage, instead of 100%?
Yes, sir.
I mean, I understand District 2 needs a lot of paving.
Yes, but.
But if they were getting 80%, 75%, 65%, 99% is more than what it would've been originally.
Absolutely. And that's where I go back, not to cut you off, whatever we get, we're gonna maximize the paving out there. So, yes, sir, if it's 85% here, it's 40 here, and 60 there, yes, we're gonna maximize absolute worst with that to try to bring.
You gotta set up a crowd, the crowds.
For the whole issue, I mean, for the whole town.
That's all I have, I just wanted to present that.
Thank you. Thank you, Tim. All right. Next item is consent agenda, non-controversial items. Hear a motion?
Motion.
Discussion. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion carries. I'm selling auto proven purchase from Deering Company for gun deer, 6105 E-Cab tractor and accessories per state contract, number 180007314, in the amount of $78,500.40 as requested by the Fairgrounds Director. This is to be paid out of account number 001-522-916, and authorizing a budget amendment in the amount of $38,500.40 for said purchase. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. Hear none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order concur with county administrator on employment as listed, don't file payroll clerk and personnel department.
Motion.
Discussion. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion carries. Article 3, component minutes, personnel change for the chairman's office as listed, don't file payroll clerk and, and human resource department.
Motion.
Second. Discussion. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion carries. Purchasing. Auto approving the purchase from Pierce Tractor in the amount of $1,490 for land pride PD 15 PH Digger and 6-inch auger, bid payable from 156-355-917, authorizing county administrative transfer funds from 156-355-922 for, for said purchase.
Second.
Discussion.
Is this outside of the budget?
There's no, no request for budget amendment, so it must be with, what they're doing is transferring from one account to the other on that. Okay, any, any further discussion? Hear none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion carries. Articulating the best paid receipt from Pocket Machinery Company for the purchase of a new CAT 420 Baco in the amount of $129,783.24, payable from 156-355-16, within budget as recommended by San Beach and Purchase Clerk.
Motion.
Second. Discussion. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order adopting following changes to Harris County Personnel Handbook as recommended by Personnel Directing County Administrator. Policy number, what, yeah, that is listed.
Motion.
Second. Discussion. Hear none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion carries. Purchasing. Auto approving the purchase from Pierce Tractor in the amount of $1,490 for land pride PD 15 PH Digger and 6-inch auger, bid payable from 156-355-917, authorizing county administrative transfer funds from 156-355-922 for, for said purchase.
Second.
Discussion.
Is this outside of the budget?
There's no, no request for budget amendment, so it must be with, what they're doing is transferring from one account to the other on that. Okay, any, any further discussion? Hear none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion carries. Articulating the best paid receipt from Pocket Machinery Company for the purchase of a new CAT 420 Baco in the amount of $129,783.24, payable from 156-355-16, within budget as recommended by San Beach and Purchase Clerk.
Motion.
Second. Discussion. All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order, order authorizing partial payment in the amount of $7,365 to Jack DeeDee's House of Carpet for repayment of materials only for the Biloxi Courthouse courtroom flooring project.
Motion.
Second. Discussion. Hear none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. I'd like to recognize the sheriff at this time, as he gives us a report.
Total count, 808, 258, eight of those are state, 25 are ready to go, 22 federal inmates, 32 juveniles, 11 juveniles of juvenile detention, all of them are Harrison County.
Jumped up a little bit, didn't you?
Little, yeah.
Thank you, sheriff. Articulating, filing year 2023, grant award from the State Department of Public Safety, Office of Land Security in the amount of $175,000 for operation. Song Gold, grant number S23LE024, and authorizing board president to execute all necessary documents and directing the county administrator to complete the budget assignment for said funds.
Motion.
Second. Here's a discussion. Hear none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion carries. Articulating receipt of check number 1, 17878, in the amount of $100,000 from City Telecoin Company Incorporated for technology grant per contract for deposit into 001-20307.
Motion.
Second. Discussion. Hear none, all in favor, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no, motion carries. Auto approving the low quote purchase from FAR 12024 Ram 2500, trade from crew cab, four-wheel drive from Champion Chrysler Dodge Jeep and Ram, cost of $43,858, payable from 001-20915, and authorizing the county administrator to transfer funds from 001 to 11468.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order authorizing advertisement for new HVAC units for the Harrison County Adult Pension Center.
Motion.
Second. Discussion. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion carries. On the county administration, recognize Mr. Frank Bordeaux to speak on behalf of the Mississippi GovCode Property Pool Association. That's insurance pool, now, not.
No, actually.
That was actually the only debate in the Senate. We were, we passed the ability to pull both in the House and the Senate, and the governor signed into law about a week and a half ago. All I'm asking is for the board to authorize Mr. Holloman and his firm to work with the other public entities attorneys creating the association. This won't tie the county into the association, this will just allow us to create it. We are hiring a third-party attorney to lead the charge, but we thought it'd be wise to have attorneys to actually deal with each municipality, and so that's all I'm asking for.
Yeah, just make some predictions if we go into this.
So last year, when we tried this, July, we were in the worst market we'd ever been in. The market's softening now, but we're able to get full capacity collectively, able to save everybody about $3 million. But the big thing is, we, we were able to get every carrier to sign on a manuscript form, which provided a lot of coverage that right now we don't have. Wind-driven rain, outdoor properties, things of that nature, and every carrier signed on to it. And so, I believe for long-term stability and budgeting purposes, I think it's gonna be great for public entities down here. We're only taking, we're only looking at public entities on three coastal counties. And as we set this up, it'll start off being a very small group that we know have updated their roofs, windows, we know their square footages are accurate, and we know that their evaluations are accurate. From there, the association would accept or deny any other public entity that wants to join, based on the risk, so.
Good. Any, any questions from, any question?
Motion.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that report. Art approving the renewal of the youth court, affirmative court crime policy, including payment in the amount of $500 payable from 001-151-57 for policy term April 26, 2024 to December 31, 25, and execution of proposal acceptance. Do I hear a motion? Hear a second?
Second. Discussion.
Second, discussion, I'm confused, what, what is this exactly? I mean, I'm reading it, but it just looks like five hundred dollars for, is it family court? Or which building are we talking about, I guess, is my question.
This is apparently a crime policy.
But then it says including payment of five hundred dollars, and I pulled up the backup, and it says five hundred dollars for insurance? I'm sure it's fine, I just wanted to understand.
Oh, you want me to?
Oh, you know, yeah, great, right.
Yeah, sure.
One of our buildings needed something more, or?
So, no, this is, um, purely for y'all's crime policy for family court. And so, and they, we moved the dates to try to coincide with other dates, and they, they carried that charge. So, this is a normal payment that y'all do every year for their specific crime policy.
Oh, okay.
Meaning if something happens within the building, we're covered, I don't?
That would be, it would be, the crime policy would be employee dishonesty, uh, there is some.
It's more of a liability.
Fidelity policy.
Yeah.
What's it called?
Crime.
Just a crime policy?
Crime or fidelity.
Or fidelity, okay. Hmm, okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion carries. Auto approving application for builder's risk insurance for the construction of fire station number fifteen at Traditions and authorizing board president to execute the same.
Motion. Second.
Discussion, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion carries. Auto approving VPN access for the following employees of the district attorney's office.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion carries. Auto approving valid reimbursement for county travel for the following employee.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, the only discussion I have, I talked to the ladies this morning, I think we can move this under the consent agreement. There's no reason, we, there's never an issue, I mean, it's, the county administrator, I'm sure, has checked those valid things, so everything's all right. So, from henceforth, we'll put that under the consent agenda, save reading that one. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion carries. Auto authorizing county administrative transfer funds in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and forty dollars from escrow account zero-zero-two, one, uh, triple-zero-three-eight-seven, and the general fund account of zero-zero-one-nine-hundred-nine-fifty.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, is that for the tractor?
Yes, sir.
Good. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion carries. Auto adopting, uh, adopting the Harrison County Sheriff's Department policies and procedures with regard to, uh, one, recording, uh, recording police activity and two firearms training and proficiency demonstration, and erecting all county patrolmen to comply with the requirements thereof. Do I hear motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Undiscussion, I don't, I, I, did we remove the camera portion of this? The camera, I think the policies that we're describing here require, uh, require cameras?
Um, yes, sir. This, on the qualifications, it's state minimum that will mirror sheriff's department. And, Ms. Trish, you can comment on this. Uh, Tim weighed in and advised that if they were carrying firearms, they really needed to have a body camera. Um, I put it on, on the agenda for the board to kind of rule on that.
Okay.
If, if the board wanted to, uh, Doc, you could, you could actually order, I think there, there'll be three at one time, so they can order the cameras through the sheriff's office. And they can be, they can be on their, uh, the accountability checklist, so you can order through them at a, at a better cost than you would get on your own.
Just individual, okay. Good enough, thank you. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion carries. Uh, auto approving payment of claims as listed.
Motion.
Second. Discussion, here none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion carries. Auto acknowledging receipt of check number eighteen-twenty-eight in the amount of four thousand, five hundred, twenty-four dollars, twenty-nine cents turned over to Chairman Clerk, Angela Trash, Circuit Clerk, Connie Lattner, representing the excess over salary cap of twenty-twenty-three to be deposited in to the general fund.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion carries. Auto approving payment in the amount of four thousand, eight hundred, eleven dollars, sixty-three cents for in twenty-twenty-three employer contributions to peers for, for retired circuit clerk Connie Lattner.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion carries. On the board of general, number thirty, auto authorizing a sixty-five percent down payment in the amount of one thousand, six hundred twenty-one dollars and seventy-five cents. Total cost would be two thousand, four hundred ninety-five dollars. Due upon receipt of purchase order to Megatronics Security Incorporated for security system, bag locks, and two camera systems installation at the Family Intervention Court Building payable from zero-three, zero-dash-one-nine-three-dash-one-five-eight-one.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, here none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion carries. Auto approving modification to for professional services between Harrison County, Mississippi Southern, uh, excuse me, uh, Mississippi Southern Planning and Development District by extending period of performance and modifying the compensation rate.
Motion. Second.
Discussion, here none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion carries. Auto approving revitalization and improvement of the sand beach at the intersection of Highway ninety and I, uh, one-ten, and authorizing transfer twenty thousand dollars in five, excuse me, twenty thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars from zero-zero-two-nine-hundred-nine-fifty to one-five-six-zero-zero-zero-three-eight-seven, and auto on said project.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, what, what is, project is just the?
The beautification.
Yes, those, one-ten trees on one-ten.
Uh, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion carries. Auto approving the use of the county farm shelter by the Coastal Mississippi Homeschool Sports Association to host its end-of-season sports banquet, May sixteenth, twenty-twenty-four.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion carries. Auto approving waiver of rental fees for the use of the Harrison County County Farm Road Shelter by the West Harrison High School Band for annual banquet on May tenth, twenty-twenty-four.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion carries. Auto approving waiver of rental fees for use of social community center by Harrison Central High School softball team for their annual banquet on May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four.
Motion. Second.
Discussion, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion carries. Auto adjudicating and authorizing expenditures as list, as necessary to advertise and bring in favorable notice opportunities, possibilities, and resources of Harrison County, Mississippi, including all forms of advertising, including but not limited to broadcast advertising, logo recognition, publicity collateral, other media, and all broadcast, printed material and signage, along with the link displayed to the Harrison County home line.
Motion.
Second, skip that section.
Second. I'll go back to it. Uh, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion, uh, no, motion carries. Auto approving waiver of rental fees for the use of the Jacksonville Civic Center by the Gulf Coast Center for Nonviolence Incorporated to host its annual drawdown, throwdown on May eighteenth, twenty-twenty-four.
Motion.
Second. Discussion, here none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion carries. Discuss the expired, uh, uh, appointments to the Harrison County Beautification Commission, y'all?
Motion.
I'll, I'll reappoint Quentin Lyles.
Part.
Reappoint Quentin Lyles, uh, to District One.
All right, is there any other?
Second, oh, Sheriff Vivas would be mine, you're gonna do them separately or together, whatever, appoint her?
Put them together.
Okay.
I got that. He had a witness for me, good point.
Y'all didn't get, did you get the name?
Williams, Bill, Miss.
Is that yet?
Vivas Williams, yeah.
I've already done mine.
I have too. All right, here those appointments, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion carries. I will bring up the library appointment in Biloxi, Mr. Parrish said just going on. I don't know if y'all are aware of this, but there is a cap on the number of years you can serve on a library board, and that's ten years. So, do y'all have any suggestions of, of reappointing?
We'll, we'll talk about it.
Y'all wanna talk about it, get back to that.
First, first.
They've been asking to have this done, so.
We'll get somebody for the first of the month.
Yeah, get it for the first.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Can, can I add something?
Yes, sir.
Um, we have a.
We're coming around, by the way.
Okay, okay.
If you want to, we'll just wait till we come around. Okay. Uh, Angela, you got anything?
Do you wanna advertise for bids for the youth court roofing?
Yeah, we need to authorize that, yeah. Sheriff will entertain a motion to authorize the, for the, uh, roofing for the youth court.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, here none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion carries. Trish, you have anything? Right. Mr. Quavis?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Collins? The only thing that I might add, uh, I'd like the board to approve not issuing any more, uh, uh, building permits in subdivision of Hidden Valley. There's some issues with the road up there that we're gonna have to get settled. And it's in bad shape, it was never, never done by the, whoever was the responsible developer. And I, I, I think it's pretty much built out already, but there's still maybe a couple lots that still, and I, I think we need to stop any permit issuance for building up there until we get this straight. So, I would ask the board to do that in the form of a motion officially.
Motion.
Second.
Here, second, any, any further discussion? Here none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion carries.
Um, I would like to entertain requesting an RFP for governmental financial services. I think we need to really search for the best, the best interest rates, the lowest cost, and so I would like to make a motion to go out for an RFP for governmental financial services in the future for the county.
Do I hear second?
Second.
Any discussion? Here none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion carries. Anything else, Mr. Collins?
All right, listen. Um, I don't know how to word this, but we have an agreement with the USDA, Chris Holt for Beaver Control.
Yeah, okay.
And we have a, um, an issue in Dogwood, Mills, and we've already got the right of entries done. So, I need to, I guess, vote to approve going into a, a contract with USDA and Chris Holt?
I think we already have that, Nathan, we did, uh.
So, we don't have to vote on that?
No, no, we, we, I, I think we've got that approved already. We, we, we did.
I don't think, I know we did one, I don't know what the term on it was, I don't think.
Mike Shalowich told me we had to vote on it before he could engage him, I don't think.
We never voted on it before, we, we, it's an automatic deal, we pay them, I think it was seventy-five hundred dollars.
Okay.
And all we do then is have the county call them, and they generally go in. Let's check on that, see if we, we are, I think we're participating in that program.
Yeah, we do. We, we, I just don't know if it, it might have expired, maybe, 'cause I don't, it's not something to keep up with a lot, so, um, uh, well, let us check on the terms, but we did have one.
It's a normal renewal.
Right.
It's, uh.
Okay.
I just, but I do know we did have one.
I mean, Nathan, uh, check it out, and, and then just call them, they should be able to go in and control that. That's, that's an issue, that can be a big problem. But the beavers, not those, them did. Mr. Collins?
Um.
That is then?
Yes, that's all I have.
Because I request that we, when we recess, we recess in the executive session for an HR issue and senior services.
Okay. Sheriff, you got anything?
Uh, I told Mr. Collins I was glad that former sheriff let him sit in the big boy chair.
I was wondering how long it's gonna take.
It means he's moving on, he's moving on, uh, sometimes, just has to pack it away.
I was hoping we wouldn't have, the board wouldn't have to take action, get you your chair, just like.
I'm having an arm wrestle.
I think we're, we're through then, Chair, uh, we'll go into executive session, personnel issue. Sheriff will entertain a motion to do so.
Motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion carries. Thank y'all.